This is NHTV Two, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bowemy. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Item number two on tonight's agenda, any public comment to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of the April 4th, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll second Sally.
All right, you have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And then I'll motion for the approval of the Special Board of Selectmen's meeting of April 25th, 2024.
Second?
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So on item number five, ladies and gentlemen, I just have one slide to show tonight. We are trying to do everything we can to ensure that we have turnout for this year's referendum. So if you address your attention to the slide here, our annual budget town meeting is Monday, May 13th, 7:00, North Haven High School. That is the second meeting that we will be having. The first meeting, I presented the budget, approximately 53 slides. Both Patrick Stirk and myself will be re-presenting the budget similarly to the way we did it back in April. Now, the referendum is Tuesday, May 21st. All the voting is at the Mildred Wakeley Rec. Center on Linsley, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then, the Special Board Finance meeting will be the day after, the night after, Wednesday, May 22nd, at 6:30. So just to summarize, next budget hearing, May 13th, town meeting. The referendum, May 21st, the Special Board of Finance meeting on May 22nd. And as we all have said, we're hoping to get more than a 6% to 8% turnout in this referendum. It has been one of the most difficult budget seasons. There is a tax increase, as we mentioned, so we want to hear from each and every one of you. Thank you. Sally or Bill, anything else?
Well, I would, you know, second your attempt to get people to show up. Our town meeting form of government really relies on the informed participation of our citizenry, so come to the Budget Town Meeting, learn the details of a very complex budget, like Mike said, a very challenging season, learn the facts, and come to your decision, and please vote. We really need public participation for this form of government to work as it was designed.
William?
And even if you can't come to the meeting on May 13th, it will be televised, just like all our meetings are.
Right, and then...
So at least you can watch it on TV.
There'll be rebroadcasts.
Rebroadcasts, hopefully before the referendum on May 21st. But it should be, so, you know, not everybody can sometimes make it, but it is a good location at a convenient time, so as Sally said, we encourage everybody to please be there if you have questions or want to hear more details, so that you can intelligently vote, you know, and confidently vote on May 21st.
You can also view it from the website, the real link from the website, and also they could even just go straight to NHTV, and the next day it's up for on-demand viewing. So if people can't make the meeting, and they don't see it live, they can, during the course of the week, they can watch it at their discretion.
Yeah, as they choose on demand, as opposed to going on NHTV and hoping it's being...
NHTV and waiting for the channel.
Right, so there's plenty of opportunities to learn about the budget, inform yourself so you can make your decision, and then vote on referendum day.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks for the added explanation, because since I've always been at the meeting, I'm not sure how to watch it on TV.
That's right. It's there.
All right, we'll move to item number six. I'll rotate between Sally and Bill on these. Sally, would you like to go?
Sure. I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Fran Nataro of 35 Green Hill Road from the Conservation Commission, term to expire August 31st, 2024.
I'll second that resignation, read by Sally.
So in discussion, Fran is watching, I'd just like to share with everyone that I've actually known Fran since I was 28 years old, and she's been a wonderful citizen of North Haven for decades, her and her husband, Richard. So Fran sat on this commission for many, many years. Fran is actively involved with the town on other commissions. She's involved with the Trail Association, with Bantam Street, and we've worked very closely down through the years, listening to some of the things and suggestions she has had. So Fran, if you're watching, I know the reasons why you'd rather not do this anymore, but I'm delighted that you're still going to be involved with the town in the other areas that you are. So thank you very much, Fran. It's been a pleasure having you on this commission, and thank you for all those many years ago when you helped me establish an office in North Haven, when I was Division Manager for my company, so thank you very much. So we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll motion for the reappointment of Michael J. Frida, 90 Highland Park Road, to the Greater New Haven Transit District Board of Directors, term to expire April 1st, 2028.
Second?
All right, in discussion, I just want to say this about this. This is yet another thing I'm involved with. I think a couple of meetings ago, I shared with you all these state boards and commissions that I'm involved with. The other night I was in Mansfield, because I'm part of the disenfranchised youth across Connecticut, so I'm a commissioner there. And this here, the reason I got involved with this, I was asked to consider sitting on it, I got involved with this because it plays a very important role transportation-wise throughout our communities. And the way this board is constructed, they pick certain municipal leaders that they think would offer value. So I've stayed with this. I wasn't sure if I was going to want to be reappointed, because I have other responsibilities now. As an example, I may have mentioned last time, the Governor's Office and the Governor himself have asked me to sit on a distressed municipality board, those municipalities that are two, three years out on audits, those municipalities that are struggling with fund balances and many other issues, economic development, so I'm going to be doing that. But I decided to agree to do this, and I think it's critically important that the transportation for the elderly and for the disabled has somebody on the board from the municipal level, the mayor for selectmen, to stay on top of this. And then, on top of that, as it's turned out, the state DOT is putting a transportation center in North Haven, I'm working with the DOT on that, on State Street, where all the buses, the shuttle services eventually will come out of North Haven and not the Town of Hamden. So that's the discussion. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
Yes, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Kadruta Lobic, 8 Forest Avenue, to the Water Pollution Control Authority to fill the unexpired term of Dale Sheridan, term to expire December 31st, 2024.
I'll second that appointment.
In discussion, I want to thank Dale. Dale's been on this board for a long time, this Water Pollution Control Authority, probably for over 20 years. So she sent me an email stating that she would not be able to do it any further. And the recommendation of Kadruta is from the new Democratic Town Committee Chairman, Lori Manzer. When Lori recommended this to me, I happen to know Kadruta and her husband Benjamin, they're wonderful people, she wants to get involved, so Kadruta, we welcome you, and we'll call for the vote to memorialize that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next.
Next, I'll motion for the appointment of Kevin Patrick Smith, 395 Skiff Street, to the Library Board of Directors, to fill the unexpired term of Ralph Black Jr., term to expire December 31st, 2025.
Second?
Ralph, thank you very much. For those who don't know, Ralph Black is a former New Haven Fire Chief, lived on Clintonville Road. I asked him years ago if he'd be interested in the Library Board, which he was, he served so faithfully. So Ralph, we thank you for your service. Ralph is moving out of North Haven, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate everything you've done for the town, and thank you for your service to the New Haven Fire Department in all those years. Kevin comes to us as a registered unaffiliate. We try to have balance on these boards, the R's, the D's, and the U's, so we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 10, who would like to take that?
Well, we are going to have a discussion and possible action to warn a special town meeting to consider a proposed ordinance to provide a tax abatement for surviving spouses of firefighters, police officers, and emergency medical technicians who die while in the performance of duties.
So we have our...
That's what we're doing now.
That's what we're doing next. So this is the sixth draft, ladies and gentlemen, so it's our goal tonight to vote on this draft. We have a date to warn the next town meeting, to have the public come in, comment, and ultimately the public votes on this. This sixth draft reflects some recommendations, Tom and Mary, I hope you don't mind, your recommendations when you came in to see me, we've incorporated just about everything, maybe with one exception. So we're ready here now to discuss this. I've invited our town attorney, Jeff Donofrio, to be here, he's here tonight. He has spent a lot of time on this, now in the sixth draft, so I want to ask my colleagues here, how would you like to start, or would you like to have Jeff present some of the changes?
Well, I think I just want to make one quick statement, and maybe Bill would, and then we could turn it over to Jeff, but I believe that the Board of Selectmen since January has worked very collaboratively in trying to put together this ordinance, which all three of us want, but of course, we were always restricted by the wording of the statute, 12-81X, that authorizes this type of program, a tax abatement. We just can't give tax abatements without statutory authority, and this is our sixth draft. We have made every effort to accommodate many comments and concerns from the public. We have taken steps to expand eligibility as far as we think we can, within, again, the confines of the statute. So I hope people realize that effort and realize what we're trying to do here. Thank you.
Bill?
And we've also looked, I think, at people that've seen prior meetings and prior discussions and comments from the public, for many people, and, you know, other things that people have submitted by email or in writing. We've also, beside all that, looked at other ordinances from other towns, to try to come up with something that I think meets not only the statute, but, you know, is actually encompassing not any firefighter, police officer, or, and now we've added emergency medical technician, EMT, that actually is a resident of this town, and even if they didn't necessarily serve in our town, so, you know, but that they served in other towns or other municipalities in Connecticut. So we've actually, I think, taken whatever we could, in keeping with the statute, with other ordinances, and even in many, in these cases, broadened it out as much as we could to not only, you know, look at North Haven, but look at anybody that served in these capacities in Connecticut.
Yes, along Bill's comments, I want people to understand there, we did look at these ordinances. Many municipalities limit this tax benefit, this tax abatement, to first responders who only work for their town, and we've expanded it to those who work for any municipality. Also, some municipalities only offer a 50% abatement. We offer 100%. Some municipalities do not cover volunteers. That was one of, I think that was the, for volunteer firefighters. That was the first change that I initiated in January on day one of this adventure. So it was helpful to, as Bill said, to look at other ordinances, and I think that we have improved on many, again, as I said, to extend eligibility to as many as people who risk their lives as first responders, but again, within the restrictions of the ordinance, of the state statute. Thank you, so maybe...
And also school resource, which I think a lot of other towns either don't have or did not.
Okay.
I think before I ask Jeff to come up, some of the people who may be watching may not be familiar with the statute language, okay? So we have it here, would you like? I'll read it, okay?
You can read it.
Here's the statute that Sally was referring to. It's Section 12-81X, and it's entitled Municipal Option to Abate Taxes of Surviving Spouse of Police Officer, Firefighter, or Emergency Medical Technician. It's one small paragraph. "The legislative body of any municipality may establish by ordinance a program to abate all or a portion of the property taxes due with respect to real property owned and occupied as the principal residence of surviving, of the surviving spouse of a police officer, firefighter, or emergency medical technician who dies while in the performance of such officer's, firefighter's, or technician's duties." That's the statute, 12-81X. And the way it works in municipal ordinances, we have to conform within the confines of the statute. And that's where we're at now, at the sixth draft. So I'll ask our esteemed town attorney, Jeff Donofrio, to come up. Perhaps Jeff can highlight some of the changes for the audience that we've made since the fifth draft, and then answer questions from there.
Good evening, everyone. One thing I do want to add to the discussion is, the first selectman just read the statute, 12-81X, and when I was asked to draft this back in October of last year, that's when the first draft was created, October of '23, I looked at the statute and said, "dies while in performance of such duties." That seems to invite debate and subjectivity. So typically, what we try to do is find out what the legislative intent was behind the language. So we obtained from the State Library the legislative history for Public Act 00215. 12-81X was originally codified back in 2000. So we obtained the legislative history, and there's no discussion. We have the transcript from both the House and the Senate debate on 00215, and there was no discussion about what the intent was with respect to that language. So what we tried to do over the last, I guess it's been about seven months now, right, is come up with a less subjective process that balances the desire to provide a significant abatement to surviving spouses of firefighters, EMTs, and police officers who die while in performance of their duties with the rest of the taxpayers' interests, because anytime you provide any kind of abatement or any kind of tax exemption, whether it's renewable energy, whether it's a senior exemption, whether it's volunteer firefighters, whether it's something like this, the expenses that are funded with the taxes don't go away, so everybody else has to pay a little bit more. So the idea is to come up with a fair, balanced method of determining what exactly that language in 12-81X means, "dies while in performance of such duties" in the context of the prospective ordinance. So after a lot of really good feedback by the board, we have a definition of line of duty death. And we also have language that allows the town to embark upon a process if there's a question about whether we have a death that occurs as a result of the performance of firefighter, police, or EMT duties. So that's performance of duty death, right? We originally, the original ordinance back in October of '23 used line of duty death. The language has been changed to performance of duty, so that it's verbatim of the statute, and it has a process whereby the Board of Selectmen makes that initial threshold determination about whether or not it's necessary to conclude that the death was in performance of duties. The first selectman consults with the applicable chief and commission, the town attorney, and if the first selectman so desires, a medical professional engaged by the town. So the idea is to do what the statute doesn't do, which is have some kind of objective basis for granting a 100% abatement of taxes. There's a pending bill that I'm sure you're aware of, that's made it through the House in the current legislative session, House Bill 5279, and that bill provides with respect to firefighters and police officers that if the death is caused by a cardiac event, stroke, or pulmonary embolism that occurred not later than 24 hours after the firefighter or police officer concluded a shift or training during which the firefighter or police officer was involved in non-routine or strenuous physical activity, the chief of the fire department or chief of the police department, as the case may be, shall have the authority to determine whether such firefighter died in the line of duty unless a local charter or ordinance in effect on July 1, 2024 provides the authority to a different individual or entity to make the determination. So, you know, to the extent that the town wants to have a process to determine whether or not it's a line of duty death, you need to have an ordinance in place before July 1. Otherwise, if this bill passes the Senate and is signed by the governor, that decision will be solely in the hands of the police and fire chiefs, and of course, for whatever reason, the existing bill that's made it through committee and out of the House, Bill 5279, doesn't say anything about EMTs. So you're prospectively in a scenario where you would have to have a process for determining EMT line of duty death, but you wouldn't have any such process for firefighter or police officer. So that's the first thing I wanted to touch on. That's a significant issue that explains why it's taken six drafts to get to a point where the board feels comfortable, the board's doing its job diligently to make sure that we have a balanced and objective process. In terms of the draft that's in front of you tonight, the significant substantive edit is the adding back in of EMTs. The original draft back in October of '23 included EMTs. I came to a meeting, was told to take EMTs out, so the subsequent few drafts did not include EMTs, and we never had a discussion about the substantive language that pertains to EMTs, because at the time, the consensus was not to include EMTs. Now that EMTs are being added back in, we need to tighten up language. And to tighten up language, I need to understand what the board's desire is with respect to eligibility. Do you want EMTs that work anywhere in the state of Connecticut, who are North Haven residents, to be eligible, just as you have with police and fire? Or do you want the benefit for EMTs to be limited to those EMTs that perform services within North Haven and are North Haven residents? That's really the last piece, as far as I'm concerned, that needs to be pinned down. And again, we never had the discussion, because it was in the original draft, came out after the first discussion, so we never took the time to talk about the substance of that, because it wasn't going to be part of the ordinance.
Bill or Sally?
I, you know, I think since it's in these, you know, my feeling in general is, is that it, since it's in the state statute, that it should be broadly, and we have broadly constructed it or construed it for fire and police, you know, it is something that maybe we should, I think we should do for EMTs as well. I don't see any reason not to, especially where I, and again, my understanding is, is that beside having private emergency medical services in some towns, some towns actually have a separate town-funded, staffed, emergency medical technician department that actually is very similar to what private EMT companies do. And, you know, and maybe again, you know, not dissimilar to what our firefighters, who are EMTs and paramedics, do, so. And again, I think it's all, in each case, a recognition that not only fire and police, but EMTs in this case are performing duties that are dangerous, you know, on behalf of citizens of not only North Haven, but of other municipalities, so I'd kind of argue that we should be consistent.
Sally?
Yes, I agree that it should be consistent with the firefighter and police officer definitions, but we have to be very careful to make it equal, and I, both for firefighter and for police officer, we have the requirement, of course, they have to be a resident of the Town of North Haven, but working for a municipal fire department, or police officers, working for a municipal police department, or state agency, which we meant the state police. So I think the same employed by municipal, a municipal government should be included for EMT to make it conform with our definition that we've had from draft number one, municipal employee, because I think that is the intention of, I know you went through, and I appreciate that you went through the, and looked to see if there was any legislative intent to help out here, because that is a very common way to help people figure out what a statute means, and there was no help there, but the first word of the title of the statute is municipal. And so I think that the EMT definition here, of course, it has resident of the Town of North Haven, that's because we can't give tax abatements to people who live in other towns, that's not allowed.
Doesn't work.
Doesn't work at all. Those other towns wouldn't like that. And just have to include language that certified as an emergency medical technician by the State Connecticut Office of Emergency Medical Services, and then somewhere, and right there to say, "and employed by a municipal..."
Right.
"...government."
Right. Valid municipal ambulance service provider.
Yeah.
Right, yep. Within the geographical boundaries of the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, I think they have to work for municipality.
Sure.
Because there are EMTs that work for private ambulance companies.
Oh, yeah.
And they have their own slew of benefits.
Oh, yeah.
This is a municipal ordinance giving out, giving a municipal tax abatement, and we have to be consistent. What do you guys think?
Yeah, and just looking back at some of the other ordinances, I could see, you know, in some, maybe that is how they've done it. East Hampton, on the other hand, defines emergency medical technician. EMT means any person who is certified as an emergency medical technician by the State of Connecticut Office of Emergency Medical Services, performing EMT duties full-time, part-time, or volunteer for any valid ambulance service provider. So they have not limited, limited in their... So they have not limited, limited in their ordinance to municipal EMTs. They've made it broader, being all EMTs.
Well, again, I'm just trying to treat EMTs the same as the firefighters and the police officers.
Right.
That's all. Because there are private firefighters and private police officers in this state as well.
So it's always a tough call on that, because I don't, you know, the, I think we're dealing with, as Mike said earlier, a fairly brief statute versus us being more detail-oriented in the, in the ordinance that we put together, which runs into three pages.
Bill, where was that from again?
East Hampton.
East Hampton.
Yeah, it's pretty much what ours says.
Right.
But I'm just saying.
But it's not only municipal, it's any valid ambulance service provider, which would include a private company as well as any municipal company.
Well, again, I'm just trying to treat them the same as we're treating the firefighters and the police officers. Mike? That's why there's three of us.
You know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn on it, because I come from the private sector, the corporate world, and there was no connection between corporate and government, local government. So, you know, one side of me says, we've expanded this greatly.
Yeah.
More so than any other ordinance I think we've seen. You know, we got publicly traded ambulance companies who have their own set of benefits also. That's where I'm torn on this. So if I have to make this tie-breaking vote, I will, but they're publicly traded companies, and I, and this is what I used to do in my corporate career, go to private equity companies, refinance other companies, buy the shareholders out, put new management in, and we got publicly traded companies that have been bought out, that are from private equity, they're funded by private equity, new boards go in, and this potentially could offer a benefit to a publicly traded company employee. I got a problem with that.
Well, counsel, before Mike perhaps gives a tie-breaking opinion, what do you see legally as having a program for a tax abatement for three different types of responders, one of which is treated differently as far as potential legal validity or invalidity or challenge?
The statute is, the statute is permissive, 1281X is permissive in nature. If you decided you only wanted to give a benefit to firefighters and not police officers and EMTs, that would be fine. If you left EMTs out and did police and fire, that would be fine. If you just did police, that would be fine. If you did 20%, 50%, 75% different, you could do whatever you want with this. There's not a disparate impact claim or, it's not a mandatory statute, right? It's a permissive optional statute. So you don't have to do all three or the same for all three, but I think, you know, that First Selectmen raises some good points. I mean, you know, I don't, I represented the town, and I've represented other towns since then, in the PSAR application at the Department of Public Health where we got the PSAR to provide paramedic service away from the incumbent AMR, which is now owned by KKR, which is a private equity firm. And there's also quite a few ambulance services that have been purchased in Connecticut by large hospital systems. So I don't know that we particularly have a handle on, you know, how many people are residents and taxpayers of the town of North Haven that work for private ambulance companies. So, you know, from a fiscal analysis and a, you know, financial responsibility perspective, it does concern me a little bit about making it available to everybody who's an EMT while we're limiting the police and fire to municipal police and fire.
Now, on the EMT side of it, I fully support, we have residents here in North Haven who are EMTs for volunteer fire services in other towns. I think they should be included on this, and we're in this.
Well, they would be.
Yeah, they would be.
So I wouldn't carve that out.
No, municipal would cover them.
Yep.
But I do have a problem, I want to restate it, if someone, people are just joining us. You have publicly traded companies funded by private equity companies, and we're giving a benefit to a, to a publicly traded company employee. We would never do that in the reverse world that I was in. Would never happen. So, any further discussion?
Just maybe to rehash something, we've talked about it every meeting, just to show the divergence of opinion. I think we have Berlin here, and Berlin does not include EMTs, if I'm reading it correctly.
Right.
I mentioned East Hampton, you know, including any, any emergency medical technician who's certified to perform duties in the state. Cromwell, I think, does it just as Mike and Sally, as you're suggesting, is volunteer member of a municipal emergency medical service, you know, department in the town of Cromwell. And then I think if I go back over to Groton, Groton just limits it to any, any valid ambulance service provider located within the geographical boundaries of the town of Groton, you know, which would include, so I think we've got like actually four different that we've actually talked about in our own discussion here. So I'm not sure there's a right or wrong one. I, you know, I think it's important that we include them, and, you know, I think you've made a valid point about not including maybe other non, non-municipal, you know, police or both at, you know, the state or local level in the ordinance. So I'm okay with, you know, with going along with that, just to get the ordinance into place like I believe it should be.
If you were to look at, you know, when we had the PSAR hearings up at DPH, if you look at the Department of Public Health website, you have to dig a little bit, but there's, there's a list of who holds the PSARS at each of the three levels in every municipality in Connecticut. And it, it used to be mostly private, but there has been, I would say, there was a blue-ribbon panel like 10 years ago from the legislature that studied whether the statute should be changed to allow municipalities, if they were unsatisfied with the performance of the PSAR holder, to take the PSAR back and provide the service themselves. And the statute was changed in large part because of that blue-ribbon panel's work, where they said, you know, this is a service, most people call 911, they don't know that it's not a municipal responder, they don't know that it's a private responder. So at a time, you know, you're providing a service to people when they're arguably in grave need, you should have control over who provides that service. You know, we go out to bid for paperclips, we should be able to go hire who we want to provide paramedic and EMT service. So now, when you look at that list, you see more and more public EMTs, public paramedic services, holding the PSARS. So I think, you know, you know, one of the towns that you mentioned, I represent, and they don't have municipal EMTs, that's why EMTs aren't included in the, in the ordinance. So I think, you know, in a town like North Haven, where we do have EMTs that are employed by the fire department, and you want to also cover EMTs that are employed by other municipal agencies throughout Connecticut that are residents in North Haven, I think it's a very fair approach to.
Let me make one further point. So we've come a long way, now we've included the EMTs. And to me, the, in addition to what I said about the privately, or the publicly traded companies, I see a level of inconsistency in including those EMTs in this, because as was mentioned here, police and fire are municipal employees. So what would happen then hypothetically, and God forbid, if we had a resident of North Haven who was a police officer for a university that had billions of dollars' worth of endowment? To me, aside from the private equity publicly traded company issue, by putting an added EMT component in, it almost contradicts the municipal aspect of a police officer, as an example, who lives in North Haven and he's working for a university. What do you think? What do you think, Bill?
I'm just trying to make the EMT definition in agreement with the fire, our firefighter definition and our police officer definition. And Bill, at least two of the four other towns that you referred to only give 50% abatement. So, you know, it's hard to really make concrete comparisons. Yes, it's helpful to look at other ordinances, but it's hard to say which is better, which is worse. We should do that because they have that, but maybe they don't have some things that we have. You know, so I'm just, I'm not really trying to exclude as much as I'm trying to ensure consistency in our definitions. That's all.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I think you're ready to vote.
You're ready to vote. But Jeff just made an interesting point also. And believe it or not, folks, it wasn't until tonight's discussion that I started to think differently on the EMT component for publicly traded ambulance companies. What I know and what Jeff knows is there'd be further consolidation in this industry, and Jeff alluded to it. And the further consolidation, aside from the hospital component, will be fueled by private equity. So.
I think you also have to take a moment, and most people don't think about who employs police, fire, and EMTs besides the government. A lot of companies do, not just universities, but public utilities, for example. Large corporations have police, fire, and EMTs. Hospitals employ their own EMTs.
Right.
So, you know, there's a lot more than just municipal folks that are out there, and if the idea is, you know, hey, we want to encourage, there's, there's a shortage of volunteers, there's a shortage of people going to the academy to become police officers, there's a shortage of folks that want to become firefighters in Connecticut. So what you're doing is you're providing an abatement, in part for somebody that's had a tragedy, but also to make it more palatable for people to go into these fields. Those same shortages don't exist in the private sector. So you don't have that same, they're incentivized in ways that government can't incentivize people. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a fair and balanced approach, and that's really what this is, that I started with. You're trying to balance the interests of folks that have, you know, suffered a tragedy while also being fair to the rest of the taxpayers and not overextending the burden. You know, it's, it's no different than any other exemption that, that we grant. That revenue has to be made up by the rest of the grand list.
So I would change the, are you, are we going to? So I'm suggesting that we change the definition to, I'm getting near the end of the, the one, two, there's six lines definition here, was performing EMT duties full-time or part-time for any municipal ambulance service located within the state of Connecticut.
Right, that's what I have. I put municipal right after the word valid.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And then they will be treated the same as our firefighters and police officers. And we're also including EMTs. So, again, that's why I opened my comments with, we have tried so hard to make this as inclusive as, as we can within the ordinance, and also we're trying to make it consistent.
So before we vote, I want to present two options here for us to consider. We could either put a pause right, we're going to vote, we're going to vote on this. Do we want to hear public comment? Or do we want to vote, and then if we do vote, we can say to the public, which is really the factual reality, if someone has a different opinion at the town meeting, they can put a motion on the floor to amend what we're voting on tonight. And then the people in the town meeting would vote on, on any motion. But you'd rather not get to that.
Yeah, I don't like that.
I thought we couldn't do that. I mean, I.
The issue, the issue becomes.
You told me you said we couldn't do that.
The issue becomes, when you make substantive edits to a proposed ordinance, there's folks that may have stayed home because they were satisfied with the ordinance that was published prior to the meeting, and then changes get made, and if they had known that the changes were on the table, they would have come and spoken.
That's an excellent point.
That's the issue.
That's the issue.
Yeah.
All right.
So, counsel, I have a quick question for you. Do you see a difference between line of duty and performance of duty?
I mean, line of duty is used in the workers' comp world. I don't, I mean, performance of duty, I don't think there's any intent that there'd be a difference. I think there's a difference, but I don't think the legislature looks at it that way because I don't think they've talked about it.
I think there's a difference also.
Yeah, I do.
I thought, isn't workers' comp more of, I haven't been before a workers' comp commissioner in 25 years, so I will defer to you, but I thought it was more course of employment or scope of employment.
It's different when it comes to first, well, to police and fire.
First responders, okay.
Yeah. There's a specific statute that's relatively new.
No, duly noted. Thank you. Okay.
All right, so, any other discussion before we move forward with this vote?
No, I think it's important, yeah, I think what we're doing is important, and, you know, and I think it's important that we get the ordinance in place, and, you know, that, you know, that may not preclude at some point in the future that we, you know, if things change or state statutes do get, do get amended or put in, or different state statutes do get, do get put into place that we might want to make changes.
I, I.
I don't think, I don't know how much more we could, you know, we could be discussing this forever, and I think it's more important that we, you know, that we actually bring it to the public to vote on.
Well, I, I agree, and I hope that we will have this meeting on, on May 20th, but I just wanted to say one more thing because one of the provisions that caused some uproar was bringing in a medical professional to help decide if it was a performance of duty death. And so we, and again, the reason why I believe we need that in there is because of this provision, which I have seen in every ordinance, and no one has suggested during public comment that it be removed, and it is the sentence that, in describing performance of duty death, it's this provision, quote, "It does not include deaths that could just have likely occurred while not in the performance of such duties." That provision is in all ordinances, and I think it's appropriately in this ordinance in order to comply with the statute. And I think that there may be circumstances where, given that language, which no one has complained about, that it, there may be circumstances where the first selectman may want to consult with a medical professional. But in light of the feedback that we heard, we tried to do a compromise, and I'm sure counsel could help and do a better job explaining the difference between shall and may, which are very important words in ordinances and statutes. Isn't that correct?
Yes. I mean, look, the whole, the whole, the whole thing, you know, it's, I mean, I drafted this thing last October, the town said, hey, there's a statute, we want to take advantage of it. The whole idea behind a draft is to have a discussion.
Right.
So nobody, nobody should have, nobody should have assumed or anything, right? The whole idea behind the process, if you, if somebody is upset about the process, they should be upset with me, okay? Because I've been doing litigation in Connecticut for 34 years, okay? Proximate cause is a big deal in litigation, okay? I can come up, right, standing here right now, I can rattle off examples of something that you wouldn't know was a line of duty death or a death that resulted from the performance of duties, okay? Unless you had medical evidence. You could have somebody who, a firefighter who had smoke inhalation, was checked at the scene, was fine, went home, went to sleep, and died, right? You could have a police officer that's in a chase and hits his head and gets checked out, everything's fine, turns out he's got an aneurysm, right? I mean, there's all these examples that you can think of that without medical evidence, we have no idea what the causation is. So the whole idea of having that isn't to say no to somebody or to take something away. I don't assume ill-intent by anybody, okay? If you have one person making the decision, and that person has no medical expertise, no diagnostic tools at their disposal, that's arbitrary, right? Then you're picking winners and losers, okay? If you say no to this person. If you say no to this person, how do you say yes to this person? If you say yes to this person, how do you say no to that person? So the whole idea of having a process is to be fair to people, including the people that are paying for this. So they have trust in the government. And they know that the town isn't being arbitrary or, or reckless with their money. That's the whole idea behind having a process. That's all.
Yeah, I support the process as written here. But I'm saying, I just thought it was a compromise that the first selectman shall, which he means, which means he must consult with the chief, the applicable chief and commissioner and town attorney. And I don't think anybody had any problem with that. But, but may, if, if the situation arises, as you're pointing out.
Discretionary, sure.
With proximate cause issues, discretionary issues. We, we kept in that language, but we separated it out as may consult. So it's not going to happen all the time. And I thought that was an appropriate compromise. And again, we have made every effort to draft an ordinance that has responded to what we've heard and still be in compliance and still set out a process. Because as you said, there's no process here. There's no process or intent in the legislative history. It's up to us to outline what we think is fair to determine who's eligible for this tax abatement under the requirements of the ordinance. So I, I just wanted to say this was, again, another compromise and another effort to do that.
And it, look, it's, it's one, it's, it's, sometimes people lose track of this stuff, but it's, it's one type of benefit, right?
Yes.
There's all kinds of benefits that come through the collective bargaining process that are in union contracts. This is something outside of any contractual realm that you're creating as a matter of law, okay? Based on a statute. I think it's a generous benefit. I think it's a fair and reasonable ordinance. I think the process in terms of the, the discussion and the seriousness with which it's been taken certainly surpasses what you see in many towns, you know, when they're looking to just get something on the books because a few people are concerned about taking advantage of the benefit. So, I mean, I think we've beaten this thing to death at this point.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Well, especially where, you know, this is a circumstance of the worst case where, you know, it's not the firefighter, police officer, or a EMT that is going to get the benefit. It's, it's his surviving spouse. So it's really a special situation that, and I've done, you know, in the military, I've done line of duty investigations. And I've come up with a few that come to mind that clearly were not due to negligence or misconduct or, you know, we're not, you know, and this is, this is a situation where, you know, we're, we're trying to honor someone who has served, served as, you know, in these capacities and by, by giving, giving a tax abatement to, you know, to his or her surviving spouse. So I think we're just trying to do something that's more than, like you said, in, in the nature of, you know, union contracts or collective bargaining agreements or even life insurance policies.
Right.
Yep, there are a lot of state and federal benefits that also apply to these tragic situations. And how, what we decide will have no bearing on any of those.
Correct.
So in that light, may I make a resolution?
Yes.
I know you want me to, and I'm going to.
Or you are going, so, okay, get that.
I will make the following motion resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby call for a special town meeting to be held on Monday, May 20th, 2024 in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut, at 7:00 PM to consider and act upon the following, to consider and act upon a resolution adopting a proposed ordinance to provide a tax abatement for real property taxes for the surviving spouses of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians who died while in the performance of duties. I'll make that motion.
Before I second that, should we also approve the draft or finalize the draft with the changes that you've made?
My understanding of the motion is that it's to approve the ordinance with the edits that were discussed to the definition of EMT.
So it's inherent in what we've already read?
I, I made the notes, and I'll get valid edits tomorrow.
Right, in terms of the ones I think that we discussed.
Number seven.
For EMTs. So, you know, so based on that, knowing that those edits actually creates draft number seven, or actually finalizes draft number six is the final one, number seven, I'll, I'll make a motion, or actually, I'll go ahead and second that resolution read by Sally.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I hope not.
Hearing none, we're gonna call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Right. Thank you very much, Councilor.
Sure.
Thank you. And the next, I think, is property tax refunds. I'll make a motion for the three, three small property tax refunds, that they be approved.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 12, the next regularly scheduled meeting of this board will be Thursday, June 6th, here on the top floor of Memorial Town Hall. We're at the point. Item number 13, public comment. Mary White.
Mary White, Summer Lane. Let's see, so I'm glad the EMTs were added back in. And I'm fine with the EMTs, the language of working for a municipality that dies in line of duty. I'm fine with that. And when you consider, if you have firefighters or police officers who work in a hospital or university, and they live in the town of North Haven, and they die in a line of duty, they're not going to be covered. So that's kind of how it's making sense to me. What else did I want to say? Oh, yes, so I was wondering, I know you, you guys voted it forward, but I don't think that this is going to make a big deal. But I was wondering if we could put, let's see, so where it says fire duties, if it could be swapped to have firefighter means go before that, because you need a person before you have a person's duties. So that's kind of the logic I'm going with, with that. And then further, I wanted to suggest to take the police officer means and then put that underneath fire duties, and then put police duties under that. And then you have the paragraph starting with performance of duty death. So the three categories of people are under definitions before you start talking about the three categories of people. And, you know, if the performance of duty death means the death occurs, you know, and so on and so forth. So it's just kind of.
Were you, were you an English teacher?
Oh.
So you want, you want.
No, I was pretty good at English.
You want, you're, you're not challenging anything substantively in the paragraphs.
No, that's why I don't think it's a big deal to just move, move things around.
Organize, yeah, different organization.
In different order, yeah.
So, for the three responders, you want the defined duty, defined duty, defined duty, and then.
Then you get to the paragraph, right.
Again, you would have been a great English teacher.
And, and.
I think it was done alphabetically, though.
Alphabetically?
Under definitions, as definitions are normally done. They're actually listed alphabetically.
Yeah, but the under, before the performance of duty death paragraph, we don't have any police officers there.
No, because P O L I C E comes after P E R.
Oh.
That's where the alphabet.
Yeah, but I think we could stray from being alphabetized so it makes sense unless there's something legal that we have to be alphabetized.
All right. All right, so we're not changing anything substantive.
No, we're not.
Just reorder.
We're just moving, yeah, yeah. And, and then what else?
So I, I think that's okay, too. I don't, you know, it just happened to be that.
As long as it's not illegal, I don't know about.
But I can see where it would confuse, you know, be confusing that all of a sudden the, the police showed up afterwards.
After that paragraph, yeah.
Right, it just happens, I think, to be done alphabetically.
Okay. And then I guess the last thing I wanted to say is that, yeah, I'm okay with the language of, the first selectman may consult a licensed medical professional engaged by the town if it is deemed appropriate. I, I don't have a problem with that. I think that that's fine. Again, I think it's redundant because we have a doctor that is going to be already in the picture, and that's the medical examiner, it's a doctor. And they determine the cause of death, that's what they do. So, you know, if there's some reason that the first selectman decides we, we want to get that opinion again, knock yourself out. Okay, thank you.
Sherman, is that Sherman?
No. Good evening, Nancy Barrett, 1 Crispy Drive. I, I could be reading this wrong because there are some, there's some text that's in red and some that's in black. But again, with respect to the ordinance, it looks like the first paragraph describing the emergency medical technician means, it still says that you're limiting it to valid ambulance service providers located within the geographical boundaries of the town of North Haven.
No, we changed that.
Oh, you did?
We changed it to municipal, valid, municipal, and then we changed it to within the state of Connecticut.
The state of Connecticut, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed that. I, I heard the valid and municipal. I just didn't know whether the last part was changed because.
Valid's in there. We added municipal after the word valid.
Right.
And then we changed North Haven to the state.
State of Connecticut, okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Sherman, I saw your hand up. Mr. Katz.
Good evening, Sherman Katz, 40 Sherwood Drive. Just a few questions, about 25 or 30. The bus company that's going to be there, is that a becoming a taxable piece of land? Or does it?
No.
No, that's, so that's gone.
Yeah, that's, as a state agency, they're, they don't pay the municipal taxes.
That comes under the.
Right, however, building permits, we would get the revenue for.
Off the top of your head, how much land do we have left that we can build commercial property, buildings on? We were filling up, seems like we're really filling up the town.
Right.
So it doesn't seem as though we have a heck of a lot left.
So your question is commercial? Because there's certain sectors, Sherman, I'm working on. So if we look at commercial, are you, commercial and retail?
Commercial, industrial, non-residential.
I'm going to say that it's probably 70 acres left. No, actually, more than that. 70 plus 48, 118 acres left probably throughout the town.
Are there large pieces also?
Yeah, one is 72 acres. But 10 are wetlands, 10 are protected species. So we're working with the, I'm working with the owner of the property, DEP, the state, so that's the gross 72 right there acres just in that parcel.
So we still have the possibility of growing our green list with new businesses?
Yeah, and to that point, Sherman, one of the things that, that I'm grateful for is the relationships I have with the corporate people and the companies that are here in North Haven. So just yesterday, I had a meeting with all the executives from Medtronics. And they're planning to, over the next few years, put almost a billion dollars' worth of upgrades in their facility, including, including building a new building. And part of the strategy that we're working on, myself and, and these top executives from Medtronics, is to build a campus there. And that campus will include hosting doctors and scientists who will be coming into our town to train on new technology for surgical equipment, for new updates on orthopedic hip and knee replacements. So there'll be hosting a campus there. So there's going to be tremendous growth there at Medtronics.
Self-insurance that we have. I worked for a company where we had self-insurance. We had about 400 employees. And I, I'm seeing something that's going on now and here that it's burdensome that you don't save on self-insurance anymore in many instances. I don't say we're not. But is anyone looking at why, you know, improving our system? Should we go, should we not have self-insurance? Should we continue the self-insurance? You said that our self-insurance went up about $90,000 or something like that?
You know, much more than that, 26%, well over a million.
Well over a million. So I really think you need to have someone delve into that deeply to see where, where the money is going.
Well, this is something I do, Sherman, here, okay? I'm already thinking about this. What are the options for the future? The advantage of self-insured in the beginning was we probably saved $700,000, state taxes, compression of administrative fees. We joined a consortium. We're in with several other companies and municipalities. But within those, within the consortium, there's what we call vertical silos. That means each entity, whether it's the town of North Haven, Ansonia, or whoever else is in the consortium, we're responsible for our own claim history. So we agreed to do that back then because what we didn't want was to be in a pool, insurance pool, and have the liability for other entities within the consortium who had high claims history. And that worked for us for many years, but not this year. Because when we look at the workforce here, it's an aging workforce in, in some respects. When we came out of COVID, more elective surgeries took place because people weren't having elective surgeries during COVID. So we got hit pretty hard on a month-to-month basis, on a 12- to 13-month look back on our claims. They went up tremendously. So we're watching it for the future. I think next fiscal year is going to tell a tale for us. And that tale will be analyzing a story in two parts. Part one, should we remain as self-insured? Or part two, should we do something else? So it's something I am looking at.
We, the, the last company I worked for, without going into a long story, they negotiated a deal with one of the insurance companies. I won't name them. They negotiated a price that was 50% of what the insurance company did. They had, they had them bidding against each other to cover our company. 400 employees was good for them. So I, I, I still think that the bidding process is very good in, in almost anything we do, according to our charter.
Well, in theory, you're right. In reality, it's very difficult. Because the bidding process becomes a bid with different insurance companies. So if our employees have Anthem Blue Cross, even though we're self-insuring it, for the employees, it's seamless. They bring a card in, it says Anthem. So you can't just necessarily go out to bid on insurance and change insurance companies because it's a violation of some of the union contracts that exist. Because you have to have at least the same amount of insurance and the same network providers.
And some, we, we, we went through that because we also had unions.
Yeah.
And as long as we provided the same or better coverage, we, we were able to change insurance companies.
Yeah.
And we did that with.
That's very true.
Couple of companies I worked with.
Yeah, no, you're very, that's very accurate on that.
The other problem, though, too, is, is that as opposed, you know, as opposed to in the past, there's increasingly fewer, fewer insurance companies. So, because there's been compression in that industry, just like there has been in a lot, which actually, in many respects, is anti-competitive.
Well, right now, we have Humana finally moved into Connecticut. And my insurance with them, I pay a monthly premium. I was paying two fifty with Anthem, they were going up to two seventy-five. Humana came in with a little better system and ninety-five dollar premium. So there is room, I'm sure that you can search for things. If you have time.
You know, we are looking at various options, I think I could leave it at that.
Yeah, that's big bucks. Let's see. In the, I'm not opposed to the benefit that we just spoke about in the left. I do have a question, though. And this is as surviving spouses. Should that be surviving spouse? I don't know grammatically. And if the surviving spouse gets married two years later, do they continue with this?
No.
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 Is that in the, is that in our proposal?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no, because I didn't hear it said.
So, Sherman, can I answer the first part of your question? So it should remain spouses, because grammatically, the word police and fire departments are plural.
Okay. Another question, we have some supernumerary policemen that direct traffic. If, God forbid, one of them gets hit by a car and gets killed, are they included in this program?
Yes.
Jeff had his hand up, so I turned it down.
I do like the idea of a medical examiner declaring the cause of death. We have coroners in town that are very, you know, in the state, they are very skilled in knowing about death, no matter what trade you're in, no matter what business you're in, no matter what your dangers are. And then it takes the possibility of biased decisions.
But it's a little bit more than just cause of death. It is--
Right, excuse me, eligibility.
No, it's a little bit more than that. It's not just cause of death. It is whether it would have been just as likely caused not in the performance of duties. And so it's not just what the medical examiner or the first doctor says is the cause of death. It's that one sentence that I highlighted earlier. It has to pass that, in my mind, very restrictive language. Our town attorney is nodding yes, we don't know, he's agreed, but here, he's agreeing with me, and I appreciate that.
There's a difference between cause of death and whether, cause of death, that certificate could say pulmonary embolism. That doesn't tell you whether it was caused by performance of the duties.
Exactly. And that's why it is helpful to have in our process the option to where we may seek consultation.
Yeah, that's why--
It's not just cause of death.
Coming back to a question we asked about if the spouse remarries, I'm sorry, didn't get the answer to that. The spouse--
They're ineligible.
Eligibility is lost.
The eligibility, she loses her eligibility?
Yes.
Or he, he, it could be a woman, it could be a man.
Surviving spouse loses eligibility.
Okay. The bridge at Sackapoint Road, is there any anticipated, expected completion date? Because I go by there frequently, and sometimes you see one worker, and sometimes no workers for three to four days, and then another. And I know how some of the construction companies do, is they move their crew from place to place, so that they can do four or five jobs at the same time. What does it look like? Because it looked like they had a lot of progress, and it--
Yeah, so it'll be completed probably by July. So top coat's on, the traffic is now--
Sidewalk's done.
Sidewalk's done, so, you know, this has come up many times before. And this project is funded eighty-eight percent by the state and federal government, so--
Is that eighty-eight percent of what it finally cost, or what originally the cost was supposed to be?
Finally cost, we're--
So we're going to be hit hard?
No, no, no. We'll get reimbursed for any overages from the original.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so what sometimes gets lost is that we, because of the federal and state funding, we have to work closely with the DOT in this case, and we're not controlling the project. We don't control the project.
I know that.
So when there's delays, there's reasons for the delays. One of the big delays was the pipe was crushed underneath the bridge at Sackapoint Road. If we didn't catch that, there would have been flooding, sewer backups in twenty to thirty percent of the town. So, and then with the state rules and regulations, we had a shutdown for months. Early, with, last year, we shut down for months because of a fish migration issue in the Quinnipiac River.
Didn't know that.
DEEP came in. So these are the things that we deal with.
And I didn't know that, so thank you for enlightening me.
Fish migration, shutdown, month.
How are we doing on the Hampton Inn?
Hampton Inn, I was down there two weeks ago. Excavators are there right now, and they're breaking, they're carving it out, ready to go.
So it'll be ready by next winter, maybe?
Fourteen months.
Fourteen months.
Fourteen months from this--
Wow, that's not bad.
Weather permitting.
No fish problems there.
No fish migration issues there.
All right, we're ready to go.
To Hampton Inn.
I think I'm going to stop now. I've taken enough of your time.
Do you have any other questions, Sherman? If you have, may I ask them, please?
Can't read my own writing, too. Something that's bothered me a little bit, when you go over the Route 22 connector that goes from Washington Avenue to--
State.
Upper State, you know, State Street, yeah. Many, many times, they don't put the lights on, or they put a few lights on. And when that, they don't have the lights, that is one dark area at night.
I drive by there every night.
Pardon?
I drive by there every night.
And I, so I, you know, I just, I never thought to bring it up to see if you can talk to somebody about making sure those lights are on. Because I get the feeling the state turns off certain lights when they're on.
No, what's happening there is, they were out for months, because they were recirculating the whole electrical system there, the state, from Route 22, about a hundred feet into Valley Service Road. So now, the circuits have malfunctioned. So the state now has the parts back on order, on back order. And once those parts come in, then they will reestablish those lights, which are out right now.
And I make a final suggestion, take down all the signs that say no right turn on red, because people don't care.
Yeah, they don't, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Katz.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My last thing, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
I looked at the budget, I watched the workshops, I'm disappointed, and I'm saying so, that I do not support this budget. With a three, a two-point-six-five this year, a one-point-nine-four last year, or nine-point-nine-five-one, that's a lot of tax increase in two years. And the way things are going, I don't know what next year's going to be. Because some of the things that you're not giving this year, I'm sure that people at your supervisor, your department heads, are going to come back and ask for the same thing or more next year.
Plus, next year is a revouch, Sherman, so--
And next year's revouch, so if you have an older home here, your tax is really going to get hit.
Right.
Yeah, your value will go up, your mill rate will go down, but your cost out of pocket will go up. So I, I, I like people to vote no on this budget, especially those people on fixed incomes. It's a killer.
Well, this is why we're all encouraging people to educate themselves about the budget and come out and vote.
I looked at the last budget referendum that we had, it was atrocious, absolutely terrible.
Yeah, it was about six hundred and eighty people voting.
Yeah, that's all that voted.
Eighteen thousand eligible.
And I have to say, I don't, I really am, I'm disappointed in the residents of this town. I moved in here fifty-five, fifty-six years ago, and you had tremendous participation in referendums and town meetings. And it's a shame that you don't come out to vote yes or no. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm voting no. But I would like to see all eligible voters come out and vote. We don't want, we don't want a few special interest groups to pass or turn down anything, any kind of thing in this town. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, our early referendums, in the early nineties, when we started, we had five thousand people voting, and there were twelve thousand eligible voters, so I can't think of anything more important than the budget, as far as our yearly cycle of town government. So I just hope people will educate themselves and come out and vote. And we can only say that so much. It's up to you guys to come and vote.
So I want to, I just saw an email today from one of our residents, and the resident asked me a couple of questions, suggesting we use the broadcast system to have people come out and vote. But that broadcast system is for emergencies. You see me, you hear me on those updates, storms, weather, all the weather issues, so we can't use that emergency broadcast system for anything but an emergency. That's why you hear me on there with the tornadoes and hurricanes. Secondly, I was asked the question, how come the Board of Finance meeting is after the referendum? The answer is that you have to have the Board of Finance meeting after the referendum, because the Board of Finance has to establish the mill rate from what the public votes on. And that's why, that's the answer to that question.
Right, they can't set the mill rate for the tax bills that go out the following month, until we have a budget.
Right, so--
Very good.
Or if the budget, or if the vote fails in the referendum, then the Board of Finance has to work on coming up with a revised budget that needs, you know, that will need to go back for a second vote.
Right. If the resident's watching, I'm going to plan to give you a call to further explain, you had a couple of other questions that I will, I will answer, so. All right, I see Mrs. Caldwell's hand up.
Jenny Caldwell. I don't have particular comments, I just have a couple of questions as we're heading on to the referendum. The grand list can, we get, I'm unclear on when we actually get revenue from businesses, because there's been a lot of economic development and things like that, but are they taxed on, on the profits that they make? Or are they taxed on the items that they own? So just to kind of get a better explanation of, you know, one of the things that came out during the public meeting was that the grand list, you know, we weren't getting as much as we thought we were going to get off of it. So I'm just trying to understand the relationship between the number of businesses that come and the revenue that's generated that actually helps with the tax base.
So they're taxed on the real estate property, and they're taxed on their personal property. But I said at the last meeting, the public meeting, that we, there's a manufacturer, state manufacturers' personal property exemption that manufacturers in the state of Connecticut can apply for. In our case, we had a big offset because of the state exemption. The state doesn't reimburse us as a municipality for that offset. So it's the same thing, it's really, homes are taxed on real estate, businesses, real estate, and many of them are taxed on personal property. It's not based on profits or anything like that.
So the property that they own would be, you know, the assets that are part of the business?
Everything from paperclips to computers to vehicles to whatever, you know, I have to pay personal property on my little business. Everybody, every business has to file a return in November.
So like, the limousine company that came in, will they pay taxes on the cars that they own?
Absolutely, vehicles that they own. Equipment, you know.
The term personal property is kind of a, for the average person, is a misnomer. It's any business property beside the real estate. They also, you know, like computers, you know, any other type of, you know, equipment, all that goes into, you know, goes into them being taxed on that. The only thing that we're taxed on in terms of personal properties are cars.
So a business that owns cars as part of its business, they don't pay taxes on their personal property the way we do for our cars? That's actually part of their business?
No, it's included in their, in their property tax.
So it includes both?
Right.
And then is there any benefit to the--
Computers are too, you know. That's a major, you know, but those things depreciate as well.
Well, I don't, let me just say, for some of our largest taxpayers, we're getting more tax from the personal property than we are from real estate.
Right.
Right, because if a business comes and they're in a, so you've got a strip of stores, and the store is empty, the company that owns the building is still paying taxes, right?
Yes, real estate taxes.
And then when they, the business that goes into that building is just paying for items and the assets that are part of that property?
If it's a restaurant, they're paying tax on booths and chairs and stoves and--
Refrigerators.
The bars and the refrigerators and, you know.
But there's not, there's no mechanism for if there's, you know, sales tax that's collected that goes, does any of that go back to the, to the town at all, on the local level?
I wish.
No, the way that works is that the state, if the state reaches a certain sales tax level, they, they give the municipalities a certain portion of it. So, but we have heard that although state tax revenue has increased, sales tax revenue has decreased. So, so we don't know. We don't budget for that revenue if it comes in, you know, like last year, I think it was four hundred fifty-one thousand we got, previous year was maybe five, six hundred thousand. But we don't anticipate anything this year unless the sales tax revenue meets the threshold that the state establishes to reimburse the municipalities in portion.
Okay, yeah, that was in the paper today. It was down three hundred million.
Yep.
Sales tax revenue. You know, the reasons for that, I think, are many.
Yeah.
I think people are being more careful how they're buying, because they have less disposable income with inflation.
Okay, I was, it was unclear to me about, you know, which exact, you know, what--
Yeah.
From, from what grew the grand list in terms of what the, what the businesses--
Well, Bill is correct, the personal, the name personal property, I never liked it. I always call it personal business property, because then you have a better understanding of what it is. To me, personal property is, you know, for personal reasons, but it is a significant portion of our overall tax revenue. Certainly, real estate taxes are by far the largest chunk, but there are, you know, then we have the car taxes, we have the personal business property. But of course, that depreciates every year.
Right.
So, so we like to hear things like--
Medtronics.
Medtronics bringing in--
New equipment.
A billion dollars of new stuff, because that'll help override the depreciation of the existing stuff.
That's exactly right.
One, one last, this is actually a comment, you guys were talking about--
The other thing that also hurts us is, and we get something from the state in terms of payments in lieu of taxes, is that, you know, for businesses that are not-for-profit, you know, we're not able to tax their real estate or their, you know, business equipment or whatever. So, you know, which again is, you know, and I think Mike's discussed that at, you know, at our, at the budget presentation system.
Exempt property.
Did you understand, because I'll explain further if you did not understand that.
About the payments in lieu of, yes.
So, just to further elaborate, eleven, twelve years ago, we were getting seventy-seven cents on a dollar from, not, from universities or hospitals, all of us, all across the state. Now we're probably about, at best, forty cents on a dollar. And there was no reimbursement back to municipalities, the pilot took a hit every year. Now, we're fortunate, we got, and I supported this in a bipartisan fashion with the other mayors and state legislators. We did a multiple-tiered pilot program, and we were able to get more money as a result of that. We didn't get as much as Hartford or Waterbury, New Haven, but we did get a bump on that, so. But we're still nowhere near that seventy cents on a dollar that was twelve, thirteen years ago.
So we're getting a little bit more pilot despite that, because Divine Street keeps growing, and Quinnipiac keeps doing whatever they're doing over there. So that helps.
Yeah, what's that I was saying, it does help. It increases the aggregate dollars, but it doesn't increase the seventy-seven cents, getting back to seventy-seven cents. The aggregate dollars increase, so.
It just helps make up for that decrease, so. But again, you know, how much more, to Sherman's question, how much more room is there for Yale and Quinnipiac to develop? Because those are our two biggest pilot people, entities. I don't know. Do you have any, do you know anything you could share about any development on, in the horizon for Divine Street or Quinnipiac out there?
On Divine Street, we've pretty much maxed out. But, but the, one of the good things about Divine Street that gets overlooked is that, as an example, this was a major project of mine in two thousand and eleven, it was all empty. AT&amp;T had moved out, there weren't apartments there that you see now. And then I started meeting with Yale, their healthcare executives, Marta Bornstein, Vin Patrini, and many others, and we started to move forward. I drove them all around town, and we picked that spot. But on top-- But on top of that, even though they're part of the pilot, I was able to attract that high-end animal hospital there. So they're paying taxes. Then I met with a housing developer, and you see now the Village on State Streets. That's all taxable. So we put together pieces to a complicated puzzle. And as a result of what I just described, that whole medical epicenter, including the apartments in the front, is probably paying 15 times as much taxes when you put the pilot in as to what it was paying when AT&amp;T was there. So that district has been, has exploded with tax revenue from the pilot, from the apartments, from the animal hospital, and then we, even though, and we got Gaylord in there now. And they put a lot into it, so the pilot has increased based on that.
Plus, thousands of our residents, myself included, prefer going to Divine Street for yearly
Right.
medical tests that we all have to have going there rather than dealing with downtown.
One last, you guys were talking about participation in meetings, and I know that during, you know, COVID, there were some meetings that were on Facebook, and people could participate that way. And I know with the, when we were looking at the Affordable Care, not the Affordable Care, but the Affordable Housing Plan, that that was allowed to happen as well. And I just think that that might be a way to allow people to not just watch meetings, but be able to participate even if they're not able to physically get to a meeting, especially for those really important meetings like the town meeting that we just had, where people could really weigh in on the budget, and you could hear opinions. So it's just an idea. I know that the Board of Ed has theirs, but although I don't think they have participation necessarily on Facebook. But I know that did happen at that one hearing, so.
Well, you see me glancing down at this? I'm monitoring social media right now to see if there's any questions or see, to see what, you know, because people are watching this meeting on Facebook, so.
I just don't think all residents know how they can access that if it's not, like, where it was clear, I think, on the Affordable Housing meeting that was there, where people knew exactly
At the library?
At the library. I don't know, did they come in through Facebook, or maybe they came in through Zoom? I'm not really sure. But there was a, there was a participation.
I know that Val was very nervous that day.
When you start trying to do interactive virtual meetings like that, it's very cumbersome. And then you have the possibility that the technology fails, and you offered it, and you publicized it, and then it doesn't work. And then now it changes the whole scope of the meeting, and I'm not in favor of it, but I know it's not my decision. I just know the anxiety that I had when we were doing that during COVID times, and the times that the technology failed, and it was very stressful.
I know there was one, definitely there was one meeting that Stacy ran where I think there was, that there was participation. I thought that might have been Facebook. It's just something to consider because, you know, it is sometimes hard to get to a meeting, and/or people have things that prevent them from getting there because either they have some sort of, you know, health issue where they can't be there. And it's, it's good to be able to hear it, but it's also, I think it's helpful for people to be able to actually participate, so. It's just a thought.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Sherman Katz.
Sherman Katz, 40 Sherwood Drive. I just want to give you some history on the medical complex over there. Yale was not the first tenant in that building that was SNET many, many years ago. And SNET sold the property to Yale. Then two, two, two first electmen's before you, you know. At that time, that was an empty lot. And I worked very hard with Gaylord for several months, myself and some other people on my street, to get them to come in there because we thought it would be a good addition to it. At that time, it was just dirt and grass. And they agreed to come in, they thanked us for our help. And that's how that whole thing started there, was Gaylord, and then it expanded from that.
Well, you worked with me when we had ORNL come in and started building these buildings?
Yeah, he was, he was a great guy.
Mr. Katz, Phil, remember him from ORNL? So what Mr. Katz did not say here, his, his street and where he lives backs up to the property. So we had neighborhood meetings, when we were bringing Yale in, we met with all the people. So Sherem had a lot of input in terms of buffers and things like that back then.
And ORNL
ORNL, right.
He followed through on every promise that he made.
He did. He was, he was
Very good.
Yep. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'll take a second. Like to thank our town attorney, Jeff Danofio, for being with, for being with us tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.